Might have timed out of YouTube, thought we were just spamming.
Didn't like my story about my.
I didn't say they're wrong, I just.
Um, the cons for that is that it's not open to everyone. Now they're just holding still. Um, a second option would be to publish the survey link online, social media. Put some flyers up around town, go that route. It is open then to everyone, but it is inside and outside of Fullmouth. We can't really prevent, we can't react to who we're getting input from. So again, your likelihood of having other people drop in and do the survey is higher. I had several cities that I got ahold of let me into their surveys. They had two, they, they had varied ways that they went about their surveys. And they had both of these options. So I had several cities send me a link as if I were one of those participants so that I could go in and see their survey and how it worked. So they are doing both options. I think it just gets back to what is your goal? If your goal is to try to get, even though it may be less people, to try to get better representation of all the areas of the community. Option one might be the best bet for that. If you're just wanting numbers, you can go with option two. And then, as I said, we've had a list of questions for the survey that we've put in there. So we're just looking for feedback on distribution methods and then just the reporter process.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Reading through it again, when I read through it the first time, I didn't really, nothing really stood out to me as something you could spam the system with. Some, like, I appreciate the concern, like, hey, we're gonna build a park, should we put it over here or put it over there? That's probably not something you want to put out so that people in North Dakota can have a say on that. But I didn't see any of those kind of things on these questions. Is there something that stands out to you as?
Things that people would come and do that would, I don't know specifically. So you said they do get stragglers. There may be a way to weed that out, but once you've received that public input, you probably do have to incorporate it in.
Thank you, Councilwoman Moore.
My concern with the sending things out in the utility statements is always that it just sort of like inherently disenfranchises anyone who doesn't pay utilities to the city. Oh, Chelsea has a retort. Oh, sorry, wait, sorry, we can't hear you for some reason. I think it's, it's just the mic being weird.
A separate mailing, so would it be in the utility bill? And if, if say an apartment complex was part of that draw, we would ensure that however their mailing happens. Sometimes I know that they don't receive mailings at the apartment complex. So you, we would probably hand deliver those to the apartment complex just to make sure that the people in the complex would all have access to that. So it would be separated so that it wouldn't be a mystery, right? Their landlords pay utility bills, their tenants don't get it. So we would be focusing on the people who are living in the properties that are, that come up.
Okay. And then I guess the other thing was just with the council's previous discussion about sort of community engagement and accessibility, the recommendations that came through the inclusivity committee from Counselor Crocker and I. There was a lot of discussion about kind of having a more open survey that then we could promote in concert with sort of all of our other efforts, like at the farmer's market and at, you know, other events. And if we, you know, go out and talk to people on their doorstep, something we can kind of give to people. So I guess for that reason, if it, I'm leaning towards having it be more open just because otherwise that aspect kind of goes away, but I get the appeal of having it more targeted. I mean, that's how they do like polling more. So I almost wonder if there's some way to like, almost do both, but like sort, like the, the council could see the data from the like people we mailed and see the data from everyone, or would that just make things way too complicated?
More complicated, but I'm not saying that's not doable. I think one of the thoughts is that this is a smaller survey, so this is, like I said, the first survey. You do see cities doing like a once a decade big survey where they, sometimes the city staff will take it on and it's a huge effort. And they do all of those public outreach events and it, it's a lot. I've been through several of them with my previous city. So that's another thing is I think this survey was intended to be maybe a smaller survey to kind of check in on a few things. Just to keep in mind when you're studying, what are we doing for this type of survey versus what would you do if we did like a once a decade big survey? Sometimes colleges will come in and help with those. It is a, it's a much larger effort. So that's part of it is just thinking about moving forward, like what do we want to do as we do these surveys? So that we are getting the information that you as council and we as staff need, but that we're also, you know, keeping it in a streamlined fashion. That's not to say one way or the other is better, just things to keep in mind.
I see the Council on Dryhead hand up. Is yours is a, is it a different question or a follow-up?
It's a follow-up and then I have a couple others that I can also wait on those. I was going to suggest the same thing, Councilwoman Moore. Scientist's brain was like, oh, it would be great to have a random sample. And then, you know, more equitable kind of focused brain was like, but I want to hear from everyone. And I think that hearing about the, you know, that this is considered a smaller survey, then perhaps we should just go with the open survey. And I, I guess to the point of like, if we were going to do both, in that case, you might want to like duplicate the survey so that you would have all the results in the one, so that you don't have to try to pull them apart that way. I don't know. And then I had two other questions, but. I was curious about what program you're intending to use because I am no fan of Survey Monkey. And I don't know how many people are, like, is, is there some other kind of software that you're thinking of?
We can look at it, the cities that we looked at had a variety of platforms that they were using. We pay for Survey Monkey, you know, utilizing it, but I don't think we're opposed to seeing if there's another option of something that we are familiar with. Part of it would be that is that you're familiar, we'd have to try to relearn something that might not be the. This might not be the best way to do that, yeah, to put it out to the public, but we can certainly look at it.
Okay.
The survey that just goes most fashioned off of, I would have to look and see what they utilize. If it's, if it worked pretty well.
Just because I remember in a past management report that I had seen something about they're looking into like a, some other kind of way to get community feedback. And I don't know, like, we didn't really get to ask questions on that. I was curious to know more about it and I wasn't sure. I know some of these, these like services that we get emails for from vendors have those kinds of built-in like survey functions and stuff. So I wasn't sure if we were progressing on that, like looking into a program to get more community feedback if that might have something built into it. And then also.
And I just want to do a time check, it is nine oh four and, and I would like to get a motion on the table if we can.
Also, I was curious about your thoughts on an optional section for demographic collection. I, I personally like to see that, that kind of information and of course making it optional so that people don't feel pressured to not.
Sure. The surveys that we, that we reviewed did not have that and they did come from a variety of cities. I think we looked at Lake Oswego, looked at some smaller communities as well. I don't, I, I believe at least one of the people that I talked to said that they didn't put that information there just because there are other, you know, services that are collecting that information and that data. I know it's not specifically to this, but you know, if that's something that you want to add, we can look at some language for adding that. I think we kind of focused on your relationship to Fullmouth and those demographics, like what is your relationship to Fullmouth? Hoping that that could help just a little bit with understanding where people are coming from when they're answering the questions.
Yeah, I appreciate that and I, I would be in favor of seeing an optional section for self-reported demographics just to, you know, or trying to evaluate how inclusive and equitable we are with our city services and to know who is responding and if we're hitting all of the people in our community with, you know, information and satisfaction of services, it'd be good to know.
Okay, I am looking to get a motion on the table if I can. Counselor Kazi.
Motion is actually for neither one of these. I'd like to see the survey.
That's fine.
I'd like to see the survey go to all utility customers. The reason being that we're asking for input on city services, which everyone uses. And I don't think we've gotten huge responses on our surveys. I would certainly support going door to door to encourage people to complete the survey. But I think unlike the last survey where we were asking people how they wanted the city to use funds, you know, we're kind of asking them how we're doing. And so I don't think there is going to be a tendency for people to organize as communities to lodge complaints about something. There may be, but I think people are pretty good with their own complaint. So that would be my thought. I don't know if there's any reason why we can't do that, but I would like to see it go to all utility customers. And I believe that reflects eighty, ninety percent of the city.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Do I get a second? Uh, so we have a motion by Counselor Kazi, seconded by Counselor McMaurin. Uh, and then Counselor McMaurin has a candidate.
I just had one quick thing and I promise it's quick, but on the question, and let me pull up the actual question here. On question three, my only request is that for the part that says not county roads or state highways, if we could maybe enumerate that a little more and say like, for example, Main Street or, you know, the high, like Highway twenty, nineteenth Street, Chapel Drive, just stuff like that. Because I don't think a lot of people know what's owned by the city and what's not. And I can just see getting a ton of feedback being like, you know, Applegate on the couple, it sucks. And we're like, well, we know and A, it's being worked on and B, it's not ours. And I would rather just, if there's some way we can weed that out ahead of time, that might be nice.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Andrade, do you have a potential, you want to try to get an amendment to have the optional questions added?
Sure, I, uh, thank you for asking. I would like to amend the motion to include a, an optional section for self-reported demographics.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second on Counselor Andrade's motion? Seeing none, okay. Any further discussion on the motion to hand? Okay, all in favor, please, do your hands, say aye.
Question or a thing to say?
Go ahead.
Um, I appreciate Counselor Kazi's motion, but I, I think that by limiting who we send out the surveys to, we are potentially ignoring community members who are from marginalized communities. And I, I'm not okay with that. I, I, I would very much rather err on the side of potentially getting some feedback from people out of this state or region to make sure that we are hearing from as many people as possible.
Do you have a potential amendment?
No, I'm just stating, because you had said, does anyone else want to speak to the motion?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I was just, if you had a suggested change, then that would give us another option.
Okay, then in that case, I would like to make a motion to substitute the motion to publish the survey link. I don't know where it's. To approve the community survey process, including option two for distribution.
Got it. Okay, so we have a, a motion made to amend. Anybody have a second? Okay, so Counselor McMaurin seconded. Any further discussion on the amendment?
All right, just to clarify, are we doing option, was the motion to add it to like the link and mail it out? Or are we just doing the, like, on the website?
Counselor Andrade said substitute.
Then the, she said including number two. So I was just trying to figure out what exactly she meant by that, like, are we?
Add something really quick.
Yeah, go ahead, Chelsea.
I just wanted to say that there, there is nothing about the financial aspects in here. We are, are postal service that we use for utility billing. We just switched to a new one, they got bought out. I don't know the whole story, but I tried to get a cost to mail this out to everyone and they were unable to provide that for us unless I made the entire document that I wanted to send to them. We were looking postcard. But that's one thing just to consider is that I'm not sure of the cost to mail a postcard, but that will be part of it if we do expand a mailing to everyone, which I did not care, I apologize.
City manager.
Yeah. Recommend if you're not going to go with option one, where we're going to try to be more precise and read things. If the intent is just to push it out there, then I recommend somebody put a motion on table for option two, the, the survey on link, social media, flyers, utility bills. We can put it in the city newsletter, et cetera. So essentially tell us just push it out everywhere. If the intent is get it out everywhere, then give us that direction. We won't limit it to an online link, social media and flyers. We'll include with that city newsletter heading in the utility bill, et cetera. So we'll just promote it as much as we can with option two.
Thank you. Counselwoman.
I'd love to hear from staff what their recommendation is instead of kind of dancing around this. What do you guys think we should do?
I agree with Chelsea's recommendations. Either, it just depends what kind of information you want back, right? If you want it, I hate to use the word scientific, but if you want more of a sample of the community geographically, which is going to include socioeconomic status, it's going to include minority status, it's going to include all of those samples, then option one is really the only way to get that type of sample because you have no control otherwise. Even in option one, you don't have control other than geographically you're pinpointing specific residences to, to take the survey. If we don't want that, we're just interested in as many sample surveys as possible and have it open as possible, then that's option two, other than in this definition, we didn't really include always. There, we just said it won't be individual ones we pick, it will just put it out there. I think the error in option two is we didn't say everything, including utility bills and everything. So it's one or the other. It's really what the council wants from this. We've had this in our strategic plan for a couple of years now to do a community survey, to discuss it more. I think this is a great first community survey. Chelsea's done a nice job putting it together. I'm fine with, I think any of that information is going to be a better way out right now. So whatever we would like to do, I think we just make a decision to do it and we can. So, but I don't, I'm like, I don't care, but really either of these are going to be a great process. Frankly, option two is probably easier for staff and a lot less work and costless.
Costless.
Probably cost less money.
And to clarify, that is the motion that we will be voting on since it got substituted and Counselor McMaurin seconded it.
Right. We would just want to. Right, we would just want to, yeah, I don't want to get over the technical, but option two doesn't say anything about the newsletter, doesn't say anything about.
Usual suspects.
I think the motion is talking as it stands. Staff will interpret that to mean pushing out to everybody.
The same to allow every.
So we have a motion to substitute the original motion. All in favor of substituting the original motion or the substituting Counselor Andrade's motion for we make a motion? Please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Now we have to actually vote on that. Okay, so all in favor of option two as presented, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. That I think carries the intention of what the council was intending, so. It is nine, or nine seventeen. Just want to be cognizant of time here. We have a, again, the item on the irrigation utility rates. Counselor McMaurin.
I move the city council approve and adopt resolution twenty-three dash twenty-eight with the utility rates and fees as presented in attachments A and B effective July first, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Counselor McMaurin has the motion, seconded by Counselor Lemon. Question by Counselor Andrade.
Yeah, uh, I, this was where I had the question. I didn't quite understand the narrative because it says something about approving a seventy-five cent increase and then showing that the revised amount is actually not seventy-five cents. So the original for up to fifteen hundred units was ninety-six cents. And so then. Hold on, I have my notes. So ninety-six plus seventy-five is a dollar seventy-one. But it's revised to say a dollar fifteen. And so I guess I don't understand why it says that the revised went from one seventy-five to one fifteen, when it, shouldn't it be a dollar seventy-one?
When it was, when it was, when the new rates were approved, it was approved at a dollar seventy-five. So it was more than, it was rounded up from seventy-five to a dollar seventy-five.
Yeah, so I guess, but, okay, so the question is, what was the original increase supposed to be from last fiscal year to this fiscal year?
The city council approved a seventy-five cent increase.
Okay. And.
But the actual increase, when you look at it, went from ninety-six cents to a dollar seventy-five. So the actual increase was seventy-nine cents.
So why is it that the revised amount is a dollar fifteen instead of a dollar seventy-one?
Because that's a sixteen point five percent increase over the ninety-six cents.
So they did it, a fixed amount instead of the same percentage amount. And it ended up with, the intention was to do a sixteen point five percent. Instead, they did a seventy-five cent.
Okay, that part was, so we approved a seventy-five cent increase.
But that wasn't what was meant.
Okay. So currently we are, it wasn't what was meant by the finance director?
By the council.
Wasn't, it wasn't addressed at the time. The council just passed a seventy-five percent increase per unit across the board. When the city finance director presented that to the council, he presented the utility sheet and it showed a seventy-five cent increase other than for this irrigation one, it went from ninety-six cents to a dollar seventy-five because he rounded the ninety-six cents up to a dollar, added seventy-five cents. So it showed up to the council at a dollar seventy-five, that's what you approved.
Yes.
When we got the first bill, when the school district got their first bill and called and said, why did our rate double? We looked at it and said, well, it wasn't supposed to double, it was only supposed to be about a sixteen percent increase is what the households and commercial industrial got was about a sixteen percent increase. And then we looked at it, said, oh, we didn't do a percent increase here, we did a seventy-five cent increase. substantially more than what everybody else got, and so we're going back and fixing. So this is what the council approved, but what we should have presented when we increased rates was we should have, we should have presented a dollar seventy-five for the new re-irrigation for the schools. We mistakenly put the dollar seventy-five and there's just no discussion about the school irrigation rate. It just got lumped in with all the other utility rate increases.
Okay.
And sixteen and a half percent.
Everyone else got sixteen and a half percent.
Which seventy-five cents was the equivalent of a sixteen point five percent. So we're just asking, since we did a sixteen point five percent increase for commercial, industrial and residential, let's also do sixteen point five percent increase to the school district irrigation.
Sounds good, thank you. That was a lot of, nothing, not quite clear.
So we have motion on the table, any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, do your hands, say aye. Aye, motion carries unanimously, wonderful, thank you. Next on the agenda, I think you have something printed in front of you, which I do not have handy, but is an email or a staff summary of an email sent from Counselor Andrade that refers to a training budget that includes honoraria and travel for a speaker for Black History Month. And I was hoping to get a motion to approve that.
So to clarify, um, the inclusivity committee wants to support, yeah, apologies, first of all, there was some miscommunication, so I slapped together this last minute and I forgot to add some information to it because we don't have minutes yet from the last meeting because it only just happened, not too long ago. Anyway, um, the activity, so the inclusivity committee would like to support two activities for Black History Month for this coming year. The two, uh, the two events are a presentation by Xena and in conjunction with Dr. Richards, and this is the part that I forgot to put in there. And Dr. Richards is an OSU professor. And so the thought was to have something detailing, like talking about Xena's experiences growing up black in Fullmouth and then tying in black history and culture in the Willamette Valley and in our, potentially in our community, I wasn't quite clear on the details from Dr. Richards. Compensation would be similar to that given to previous city-sponsored speakers. And from what I, well, we can get to that in a minute. And then the second event would be a documentary screening of Buffalo soldiers fighting on two fronts with a question and a conversation between the filmmaker Drew Holly and the executive director of the Oregon Black Pioneers, Zachary Starks. And then with regards to compensation, so Eric Nieman had proposed this event to the committee and he seemed to request about four hundred dollars for travel expenses from the council. Interfor has agreed to pay an honorarium screening speaking fee if we were to go through with this. And then he said that he, Eric said that he was looking into covering Zachary Starks' travel expensive, expenses through other means. I, I don't know much more beyond that. And so the committee is requesting financial support from the council to hold these two events. And so the committee is requesting financial support from the council to hold these two events. Um, and then there's some additional information about the documentary. Um, and I'm happy to, that that Eric Nieman had a. Had sent, and so basically, yeah, we're um, the question. That we would like council to deliberate is whether you would like to financially support both one or the events. That we would like to, that the committee would like to support for Black History Month in twenty twenty-four. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and one thing I'd like to address here is, you know, we've already put this in the budget, and so I think that it would be. I don't think this has to come to council if the city manager. Um, thinks it fits, and the inclusivity committee makes a recommendation, I do, I don't think it has to come to the city council. For these types of things, if it's already in the budget, but that's just my opinion. Um, does anyone have any thoughts on the uh, proposal?
Um, really quickly, um, to clarify the reason for bringing it is um. I don't know how much money we have for this, uh, especially because we're supposed to be doing um, scheduling DEI training, I. Hoping to hear an update tonight from the city manager. Um, and so. Yeah, the, that's part of the reason is like, we just, we don't know how much money we have and. Um, that we have budgeted already, and whether or not the council would be willing to find. Money elsewhere for this if we don't have the money, so.
I believe we've got enough money within the city council department fund to. Pay for this and the DEI training, so I think we're okay funding this.
Thank you.
Counselor Kazi.
Would this be one event or two?
Two, two events.
I will just add the school district has agreed to host the second event. At the school district, we're working on one of a couple of different dates for that, but that'll be a free event space at least. Um, I don't remember if we've had conversations about the first event on location for that or not, but I think there's still.
We're still figuring out the first event mostly. I think um, Eric did a great job of lining up all of the information. I had emailed him, but that's great news about the school district, I didn't realize that.
Counselor Kazi.
I move that we approve. Our support or our financial support for these events.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Counselor Kazi, seconded by Counselor Lehman. Any further discussion? Counselor Andrade.
Is there an amount that we should not exceed? Um, we also got information about um, you know, the. Uh, how much we compensated people in the past, Dr. White Bear, and then. I don't know if you were able to confirm from my email earlier today about Gwen Carr. Last year, and whether the other two speakers in twenty twenty were compensated.
But I, again, I'm not, I think we're fine in that budget line item, and we obviously want to treat everybody. Equitably and fairly, and so I think we're on the same page there, you know, just talk tomorrow.
Okay, um, and to that point, um, the committee would like to discuss like. Policy essentially for compensation relating to um, having speakers. We just, or, you know, recommend a policy to council, of course. Um, but uh, we just haven't gotten to that yet, since these came up opportunistically. Anyway.
Okay, um, all in favor, please, do your hands say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Great, thank you. Uh, just want to call your attention, I believe you also have an email in front of you. Uh, that's been forwarded from through Counselor Nielsen regarding Folumeth Community Services. Chris, is that true?
Um, no, they haven't seen it, just an information piece. Um. The city council allocated funds to Folumeth Community Services through the community services. Budget that we allocate each year. Um, I believe this year to Folumeth Community Services, it was eleven thousand, maybe ten thousand?
Eleven.
So in the narrative that they gave us is they needed it for the cooler that they had provided or that we're working on. The cooler's been repaired, but they have other needs for that funding, so they just wanted to report back some of their other needs to be transparent. Um, my comment to Teresa and the director that was here this evening is the funds have been allocated, the check's been cut. Um, we're happy to support Folumeth Community Services, and there's no need to really come back and get any additional approvals, so. Um, they just wanted to give you an update that those funds are appreciated, but they'll be used for other projects other than the specific freezer unit that was. Um, described as one of the.
Yep. Okay, um, and with that, you have a management report, Chris?
Management reports in the packet, hopefully everyone had a chance to read through it, happy to answer any specific questions, but. Uh, I'm dirty, so I won't uh, read it to you, how's that? Uh, but happy to have to answer any questions that you've got.
Questions for staff? All right. With that, I think we can go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
Yep, we had one, Mayor Jones.
Oh.
Counselor Kazi asked for an update on the DEI training. Um, the phone number that I had for the contact to W O U is not working, so I sent an email today. Um, I'll follow up again out of there too, but um, just haven't had recent communication. From the contact there. I believe they're an assistant professor and are teaching right now. But I don't know schedule wise or anything, so it's been a little bit hard. I'll follow up this week.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you, everyone. Appreciate you being here. With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Have a great night.